Hey Frank. City council meeting of April 16, 2019 has come to order. Cynthia, would you please, would you go, ah, would you please come forward and lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yeah, please remain standing.
We can give a moment of silence for our military and many women that have lost their lives, might be putting up first responders. If you're going to...
May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista.
Present.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Samra.
Present.
For the record, all council members, Mayor Protem and mayor in attendance.
Close session announcement, there's no reportable action. Session was given to the staff. Changes to the agenda, council, staff, any changes? If not, then we'll move on to announcements and reports. Fresh from China, the guy who enjoyed many, many Panda Expresses all day while he was there, Supervisor Rodriguez Espinoza.
Ni hao.
Ni hao.
Good evening, council. Yeah, it was, ah, we had a good seven days in, ah, the 4th through the 11th in China. I was invited by a fellow council member from, ah, a friend from, ah, councilman from Duarte, California, just, ah, north of LA. And, ah, actually, we went, it was about four or five council members, Mayor Ray Leon also from the city of Huron, and, ah, Jose Mayno, you know, he's a real likable guy, yeah, call him Paul Rodriguez, Paul Rodriguez, yeah. And also the mayor of Avenel, um, Alvaro Plessiado as well, and councilwoman Carmen Montano from, ah, the city of Milpitas, so, and the other council members from LA. Ah, we had a wonderful time, ah, we got invited, and actually, all seven days were very busy, kept this all-day touring plants. We toured a plant that produces CNG, or, ah, you know, ah, natural gas, or propane, you know, from, from natural gas, they, they make propane as well, and, um, ah, plants that make LED, plant, you know, LED lights, plants that make robotics, all the home electronics, ah, modular homes, or mobile homes, they're making, ah, small mobile homes in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range, and they're actually gonna send them to America, you know, a very nice state-of-the-art, ah, very well-equipped, and also, they make, um, you know, cabinets, you know, in which are water-resistant, so, you know, they're massively producing so much stuff, and it seems like they're ten times ahead of the United States now. Ah, obviously, so, you know, communist totalitarian government, and, ah, they, they subsidize a lot of the businesses, you know, to get, you know, they work together with the businesses to produce, and, ah, you know, they're outperforming a lot of countries, and, you know, I, I don't know, pretty soon, you know, the United States, ah, you know, and, well, the way I look at it, it's, you know, council members, supervisors, already electeds in the United States, we're all fighting each other, while they're outperforming us, and, and pushing their, their, ah, people to, to out-produce us and, and fight us. Of course, they're, you know, companies, sometimes they lost their stuff to, or, or technology to them, when they're invited over there, so, ah, you know, I, I, I look at it like, you know, it's a learning experience, and I like it, we had a board of supervisors this, ah, meeting this morning, and I told them, you know, I, I think that all supervisors, council members should go over there, that way we can learn from them as well, 'cause they, they invite us over there, and they pay for part of the, ah, you know, the package, but also too, we, you know, obviously, I have to report that in my 700 forms next, next year, ah, with, you know, that's how I did that in 2014, when I went, you know, the first time, but, you know, of course, you learn more each time, and, ah, you know, I, I was just glad that I was able to go and learn off of that as much, you know, so we can come back and help out, you know. Obviously, they're, they're selling stuff out here, and if we can sell more, more stuff from the valley, ah, in California to, ah, them as well, 'cause obviously, they don't have everything, and, and we can send, you know, ag products or whatever we can, um, it's, ah, it's productive for this country as well. And, ah, you know, came back on Thursday, then Friday and Saturday, I had the well conference in, ah, San Jose, that, one of the untapped sessions, and we toured the, the water recycling plant, actually, I had drinking water bottles that they gave me for drinking, recycled from, you know, all the, the wastewater that they use, and they actually recycle it to better than drinking standards, but I, I know that the public sometimes have the mental thing that, you know, wow, how can I drink recycled water, but they're actually recycling and selling some of the water, but I know that, then, you know, sometimes they're, they're rather use it for, for, ah, you know, landscaping, or whatever other use that they can besides drinking, ah, but then they'll put it, or recharge it, the groundwater in that area, and of course, they'll, once it's, it goes through the soil, and then down into the recharge, they get, it'll be, you know, pulled back up and, and used as drinking water, so, that's probably a better way. You know, one, ah, one of the, one contradiction that, that some of the cities said, you know, that, or especially, like the city of San Francisco says, well, the, the city of San Francisco uses, ah, you know, the H-E-C water, and I know they use partly recycled water or partly, I mean, I mean, ah, groundwater, and, ah, they will complain about that because they didn't wanna use groundwater, but I said, well, unless you wanna use recycled water, it's like, okay, then they didn't say nothing, so, um, but eventually, ah, we all gonna have to recycle more of the water and, ah, use it everywhere, so that's, that's just what we're gonna have to do in the future. Ah, I think, um, other than that, um, oh yeah, from the water, they recycle about eight million gallons a day, that's, that's a lot of water that they recycle, and, ah, you know, desalinization takes a lot of more process to go through, and, ah, and more money, so, I don't think I have anything other than that, I just got back, and so, if, and 'cause there's any questions from, ah, the council or the public, we'd love to answer.
Public, any questions? Council? You never did say, is your Panda Express better than our Panda Express?
No, no Panda Express.
No Panda Express, okay. Thank you, supervisor.
Shee shee, thank you very much.
Staff announcements and reports, ah, fire department? Police sergeant?
(inaudible)
Okay, ah, engineering?
(inaudible)
Okay, and then, ah, Public Works, Mr. Chavaria?
Good evening, your honorable mayor, council members, members of the public, Anthony Chavaria, Public Works. I'm here this evening to present our Public Works Activities Report for the month of April. Here we have Ivan Valenzuela, he's our newest full-time employee for Public Works. Ivan comes to us from the CVOC program, which is a Madera County program, he's been working with us for about four months now. Ivan has worked in the fleet department with our mechanics, in our streets department, and in our parks and LMD. Ivan also has a military background, is, was in the Marine Corps, he's been doing a great job, and we look forward to having him. Welcome to Public Works, Ivan. Every month, I choose a department, standout department, who has exceeded expectations and goes above and beyond their normal job duties. For the month of February, it was our water and wastewater department. On the left is Kevin Kimbrough, Tommy Mejia, James Zerotti, Jeff Arnold, Ramon Trillo, and Jesus Chavez, AKA Pooper Scooper.
Yes.
Grade five, next one. Ah, just briefly, I wanted to show you their certifications that they hold. You can see they're graded in wastewater, water, and distribution. As of January of this year, we combined the water and sewer department into one department, and required all of them to be dual-certified, as you can see, they're working on that now. These guys study real, real hard and continue their education. Well 17 motor failure. April 4th, we had well 17 motor failed, Shannon pump installed a loner the next day, April 5th, we're sending the, the motor in to be rewinded, it was out of service for one day. Well 11, well 11 was airlifted to remove sand, video inspected, no indication of screening or casing failure. Contractor tried to adjust a gravel pack to fill possible voids, a bullet device was installed at the pump suction, the pump is operational as of April 11th, waiting for bacteriological results, and we just received those results today, it came back clean. So next step is we have to work on our sand filter, put it back online. Picture on the left, I shared it with you before, um, it's gonna flip upside down, so bear with me, can you click on the left? As you can see, that was a pretty steady sand being discharged from that well.
Go to the right and click on that one.
This is after the work that was done by Shannon pump, you can see it's a lot cleaner, there's still a little bit of sand coming out of there, though. Okay, move on to the next one. Storage tank repair project, that's the inside of our storage tank, in the middle, looking up. Picture on the left, you can see they're finished painting some of the inside, picture on the right, contractor painting the exterior of the tank. As of April 11th, all of the interior has been sandblasted and painted, except for the floor, this floor is the last thing to paint, currently working on completing the exterior Joseph Gallo parking lot flooding. Every year, we've had issues with flooding at Gallo Park, impacting the use of our walk path near the parking lot, forcing residents to walk on the wet grass, correcting the flooding issue. Staff has installed a new storm drain drainage intake, which is on the bottom here, plumbed in a drain line, and connected that line to nearby storm drain man, manhole. That's just some of the construction that was taking place out there. Main Street sidewalk repair project, this is in front of the clinic. Next one. Another main street project, right across the street, it's completed as well, and we'll continue with those main street sidewalk repair projects. Guys are doing some tree trimming, the streets department. Waterline replacement project is 75% complete as of now, they're currently working at F and Main Street. Temporary stop signs at B and Briarwood. Again, pardon the, we're gonna press play right now, and it's gonna turn upside down or to the side, you bear with me, please. So traffic seems to be flowing at a steady pace over here, no indication of any backups. Mock roundabout, the city, excuse me, the city will be building a mock roundabout in the near future, in anticipation of construction. Staff would like to give residents a test run to give users a feel of the expected flow of traffic, and give the residents an opportunity to provide the city with, with feedback, whether that's positive or negative, if you wanna hear from the residents. New forklift, replaced our old one on the left, seen better days. Seeing in my presentation? Any questions from council?
Why, why is the plant on fire?
Just thought it was an eye catcher.
Public, any questions for Public Works? Council?
Yeah, I got a question. The roundabout, is that gonna be truck friendly, or?
Is it what?
For a semi-truck? Are they gonna have enough clearance?
It should be enough clearance, but this is another reason why we're gonna do this mock, we're gonna lay it out, and these, these edges will be rolled, the curves will be rolled, ah, to allow for, like, say, fire engines, diesels that need it, emergency vehicles that need to take those turns, they won't destroy anything, or jump curves, but there have to be rolled curves, so they'll be a little accessible, but this would be an awesome opportunity to evaluate that.
Thank you.
Neither, I'm sorry.
What's the next one in your section?
B and Main.
Okay.
The, the stop signs on Briarwood and B Street, ah, you said, um, temporary, or you're gonna?
That's temporary, as of now.
Yeah. Temporary, let me, let me jump in real quick. When we say temporary is that it's basically a pilot, we wanna see how traffic flows, where we can make some adjustments, some improvements, and then at that moment in time, then we will have something permanent that we can, you know, move from.
Okay. Yeah, even the roundabout is not bad, you know, won't be that bad.
That would be a good place for roundabouts.
Actually, now that you brought that up, Mary, you might, or supervisor now, um, when we had the, when we had that study with Nelson Nygaard, they actually identified three locations for the roundabouts. One of them was on Wenton Parkway and B Street, Briarwood and B Street, and Main and B Street. So, ah, right now, we only have the funding for the Main and B Street, so those funds, ah, and so, we anticipate in the very, ah, in the next few weeks to actually go out to bid for the project, and then, of course, after bid, then a bid award, ah, and then actual construction, but we wanted to, ah, you know, do a mock, like, kinda like we did with...
Last time here.
Here on, on, on C Street and Main.
Well, I wanted to address the stop sign, 'cause everybody calls me on the Briarwood and B Street, you know, I just send the calls to the mayor, I go, you know what, I'm, I don't know why they call me, call the mayor.
All right, thank you. A question, since we're talking about roundabouts, ah, if it doesn't work out on B and Main, can the current funding be shifted to another intersection, or is that pretty much stuck where it is?
Yeah, it's pretty much stuck where it is.
Okay, that's just a question.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Public Works? Thank you. And I see the police department.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council members, members of the public, Sergeant Fong. One of the great things about being the fiftieth safest city in California is we get to address quality of life issues, um, and in that group of quality of life issues, one of the things we've been addressing lately is, not loud enough for you?
(inaudible).
Okay. Um, one of the things we've been addressing is parking violations, ah, and one of the biggest areas that people are, are calling in and asking about is, of course, Joseph Gallo Drive. But before I begin, let me just go ahead and say, um, the Livingston Municipal Code does not allow for semi-truck parking, with exception of very limited areas in Livingston. So, um, although I'm gonna discuss certain areas here that we have been allowing semi-truck parking, um, it technically is not allowed in the municipal code, but we're allowing it since there isn't a proper signage at this point. So, if you look at the map, it's orientated north, Wind Parkway, Joseph Gallo, Travel Centers of America, and, ah, all that good stuff. So, the colors of the map, where you see the green lines are recently installed green curbs for tour buses, so that's restricted to tour bus parking only, semi-trucks are not allowed to park there, even though you can see semi-trucks parked there in the picture. Um, we've been enforcing that lately, several citations on that, there are signs posted for that, so they should be able to see that. The, um, blue zones are one of those areas that I'm talking about, that technically, they're not supposed to park there, but we're allowing them to park there, partly because we want them to have a place to park to utilize the restaurants or whatever. Temporary parking only, we don't like them parking overnight there, or using that as a storage. So the blue zones, which is mostly on Joseph Gallo and the new Del Rio Road that runs up to Motel 6, we're allowing semi-truck parking for a limited time. The red zone you see down there on Joseph Gallo, that's marked, no parking, and also at the very far on your left, which is west, and you can see some trucks backed up there, they've been doing that, that's not legal, um, and we don't allow, there is signage there, but also, if you notice, there's, they're double parked. The second truck in is really in the middle of a driving lane, when you're turning left from Real, ah, Del Rio, so we don't allow that. The other area to address, um, if you look at this stand lot over here, that's right behind Jack in the Box, all right? It's not on the street, but again, the municipal code does not allow for parking on prior property within the city limits, so that is a no parking zone also for semi-trucks, um, they're not allowed to park there either. Uh, there's been barriers placed there, and they've been run over, ah, so trucks are still parking there, but they are subject to being cited for parking violation. Uh, the other thing to address is way up north on Del Rio, that's over there by Motel 6, you see that end of the road roundabout. Um, up till recently, we had problems with the semi-trucks driving into the dirt lot, which is prior property, and parking in there, and they're tearing up the dirt, digging holes in it, so the property owner, ah, went out, and they put up some nice berms to block the semi-trucks from going in there, ah, so we haven't had a real problem there since they did that, um, but that is also not, um, not proper parking over there. So, just hopefully that clears up a lot of the questions that some of the people have that have received parking citations out there. Any questions?
Public, any questions? Council?
I got another question.
Sir?
The reason I'm asking him, 'cause I do drive a truck myself, and if that's awful, do we have anywhere else in town we could park?
Basically, ah, travel centers, obviously, we allow parking there, um, through arrangement with the property owner behind Five Rivers, there's truck parking there. On Campbell, by the Town and Country Motel, the north side of the road is allowed, and there used to be a spot on Industrial, but I noticed the sign's not there anymore, so, but that's pretty much it within the city, the city limits here. I know some people park in the driveways and such, and you're not allowed to do that. I know there's a truck parking in Del Hi, but most rest of the stuff's out of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, anybody else from staff? Okay, Jose? Okay, ah, city manager?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Good evening, public, mayor and council, appreciate you guys being out here in the audience. So I do have a few items. One, I wanted to publicly thank Julie here, who manages the bank, ah, West America, right down the street. Just recently, ah, we actually had one of our checks to one of our vendors intercepted, ah, very interesting, they intercepted it, and they actually forged the check, and somehow, through their, the, their banking institution, they were, some bank, they were able to deposit in the ATM, and then somebody else was able to go into the branch and actually take money out, and so, we, we have our investigative team working with the law enforcement officers and the banks, ah, over in the Downing area. Ah, we were, we appreciate, ah, them crediting us, ah, the funding while the investigation continues, ah, but, um, we're going to look at, ah, putting out, putting forwards some better protocols and security measures to, you know, try to mitigate these kinda things even further. So, um, again, the important thing is to make sure that, you know, you check on these things, whether it be personally or a business, ah, these things do happen, okay? Second item I wanted to talk about is, ah, we, we've been working with the utility stakeholders on the train pro forma and the letter of commitment, ah, so I was able to get some information back from them, I'll be calling for a utility stakeholders meeting very soon, ah, but in essence, um, we are, we're gonna be recommending, ah, to the stakeholders, and then ultimately to the council, to move forward with the general fund, ah, and the water operations fund, and not the wastewater, ah, even though the numbers were worked, and they look good, but the years were, ah, extended further, from 15 to 20, and so those, staff is not recommending that we go that route. And so there's a new number, as it relates to the, ah, investment grade audit, um, from, from about 180, I believe, down to 118, so we'll be going, we will, we will be going over all of that in detail, so stay tuned for a stakeholder utility meetings, ah, very quickly. Second thing is, we continue to work real closely with, ah, our ad hoc committee of the mayor, and, and our council member, Juan Aguilar, myself, and several of you out there, you know, property owners, um, and working with the county, and trying to come up with some type of tax sharing agreement, ah, in the very near future, so, thank you for everything you guys have been doing. And then, lastly, um, wanted to alert everybody that we've been working with an investment group, and, ah, they actually closed escrow, um, in the last few days, so the 33 acres off of Campbell and Hammett has already been purchased, and so, ah, they're gonna carve out some, ah, property to look at building, ah, a truck stop, but the rest of the property, we, we encouraged them to, ah, subdivide that, so that it's not just sitting there, ah, but subdivide it and sell the pieces of property, so that, ah, there's, we actually been talking to others, like, ah, car dealerships, ah, hotels, and some cinemas, and, you know, so we're talking to all these people, and hopefully, we can land, ah, some of these, and then we have more activity on that side of town, off of Hammond and Campbell. So, again, the good news is, that property was purchased, and now they've start, they've hired an engineering firm, and they're looking at subdividing, so that they can sell individual lots, a- a- as the vendors need, so if it's six acres, 12 acres, whatever it is, ah, they'll work with us. Okay, um, that basically completes my report, unless council has any questions for me?
Okay, ah, public, any question for city manager?
Council?
If not, ah, city clerk, Mr. Silva, anything to report?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I'll start out with, ah, council member, ah, Soto, please?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Aguilar?
I just wanna say, good job to the Recreation Commission, um, Recreation, Recreation Department on the opening ceremony this past week, baseball, great first pitch, Mr. Mayor.
I'm about to kill the mic for you right now.
A couple other things, um, just attended the one voice trip meeting last week with, ah, Raul Garcia, our trip's coming up, um, to Washington DC, um, also, will be attending tomorrow's, um, Measure V East Side Regional Projects Committee meeting, MCAG, and then Thursday, the governing board meeting. Also attended the LHS, ah, senior exit interviews, um, you know, very impressed with the students from LHS, ah, all the teachers and everybody that, you know, helps these students prepare for their future, ah, good job out there. Um, just a quick commercial, um, the Livingston Volunteer Fire Company Pancake Breakfast's coming up on May 4th, ah, Saturday, from 7 to 11 PM, ah, it's an event that I organize, so help organize every year, eight dollars a ticket, proceeds go to help out, buy, um, equipment for the fire department, um, and kids, ah, that are playing baseball or softball with the rec, ah, department, e for free, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Yeah, same here, I want to say good job to Jackie and Tony. How's that be?
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Nothing to report.
Ah, for me, ah, nothing to report, I'm glad people's cameras... Uh, for me, uh, nothing to report. I'm glad people's cameras are slower than I can get up, so we're good. Okay? And, uh, with that, uh, we'll move along to public hearing. Uh, this is item number one. This is a resolution approving the economic development incentive agreement, uh, between City Livingston and Foster Farms, and I will hand it to Mr. Ramirez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council and public and Mr. Blevins. Um, you, uh, hopefully through my presentation to this evening, we'll answer your questions. If you have any questions, further questions, please let me know. So, uh, just a little bit of backstory. One of the things that we have been really, really working on here in the city is having an economic development action plan. The economic development action plan that we, uh, have been working on is, number one, we want to retain, we want to expand, and of course, we want to recruit. So we want to diversify the sales tax base for our city, at the same time maintaining our prosperity and our culture. And so to do that, one of the, what we have done is we actually created an economic development fund to, uh, spur development in, in, in a lot of different areas. So what you have before you this evening is, uh, an incentive package that we put together for Foster Farms. Now, who's Foster Farms? Well, Foster Farms is a, is an, is an entity here in town that, this is their world headquarters. They employ about thirty-five hundred people here in the region. Uh, they have been partners of the city of Livingston since the get-go. Uh, they were the ones that were responsible for paying for the police department down the way. Uh, just about every, whether it's, whether it's a nonprofit in this area, whether it's the city, uh, or whether it's residents in general, have been able to go to Foster Farms for some type of donation, whether it be for the Fourth of July, whether it be for, uh, you know, recreational programs, whether it be for, uh, you know, sponsoring, uh, football, soccer, you name it, over the years. So Foster Farms is, is a, is an entity that's tied to the hip to the city of Livingston. So there was a big shift in, in the poultry industry, uh, very recently, where, uh, Costco decided that they were going to supply their own stores with poultry. So that left, uh, Foster Farms in a very awkward predicament because they had to make a quick shift. Well, what transpired at that moment in time was this triggered them to start looking at what they needed to do. And part of what they needed to do, unfortunately, um, uh, got them to start looking at expanding and coming up with another, uh, production line somewhere else other than Livingston. Okay? So as we started to talk about all of these things, uh, internally, we started to reach out to our neighboring partners, which is the county and the utilities and, and of course, the state. And so what ensued is that, number one, we cannot, uh, we need to figure out a way to help Foster Farms. We want them not to have to decide economically to move somewhere else because we believe that that would be the beginning of something not, not so favorable for the city. Because, uh, uh, that insinuates a lot of different things. So we went to the state, we went to the county, we went to the different, uh, training entities and the utility company in the area, MID, and, uh, and so forth. And we all came together and we decided that we were, we're going to put together an incentive package that totaled six point five million dollars. Of this six point five million dollars, the city of Livingston is contributing, uh, about half a million dollars and doing this, whether it be over a three-year period or over a five-year period, or whatever council decides. As part of our contribution, number one, we cannot afford, uh, to lose five hundred and twenty-something jobs that would have been lost if the, if there was a plant closure and not replenished. Number one. Number two, who's to say that those, those, uh, uh, two thousand and thirty-two jobs that currently exist in the Livingston would not be jeopardized? Because, uh, once you go down this particular path, what can happen? Well, I'd rather control our destiny than not. Number three, we're talking about jobs and these jobs, uh, create sales tax and there's also property tax on the backend because once you shut down a plant, then you're, the property value goes down. And if the property value goes down, then, then of course, what you collect from that is no longer possible. Number four, the, the, uh, future investments, uh, might have not continued. I mean, if, if they're looking at expanding somewhere else, then who's to say that they're going to continue to, to invest and do more in here? I'm not saying that they're not, but again, it's better if we control our own destiny and just, and let them know that we are partners and that we want to do everything that we can to, uh, make them, uh, decide to stay here. So what was put forward was a six point five million dollar package by the governor's office, by the, uh, MID, by, um, the county and other, uh, partners. And so we, as part of our, um, Economic Development, uh, Opportunity Fund that we had established some time back, from there, we basically moved over a little over two hundred and something thousand dollars and invested in, in keeping those jobs here. And that means that we have to invest a little more in the next few years in order to address that total package. Now, having said all of that, there, it's a sixty-eight million dollar, uh, so by the way, they said yes, that there, i- if we go through, they're going to invest here. So sixty-eight million dollars, of that sixty-eight million dollars, about thirty million dollars is the actual evaluation of the building. So you, you, you look at the numbers, thirty million, one percent, really comes out to about fifty-five thousand dollars. So every year, we're going to get fifty-five thousand dollars. That might not sound like a lot, but guess what? Those add up pretty quickly. So you add that to the sales tax portion of those people who buy fuel here and eat here, okay? Let's just say it's about ten thousand dollars a year. So that, that becomes sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay? And, and then just recently, they announced that they need, they were going to build a, uh, new laboratory. So that's, uh, that laboratory is about one point two million dollars. So let's just say that's another ten thousand dollars of property tax. So then now that jumps up to seventy-five thousand dollars, and I'm using, you know, conservative numbers here and so forth. Only to tell you that to paint the picture, that, that this is a wise investment, okay? Because what I would hate to happen, okay, is, uh, something like in the Midwest where you start to see blight and off, and, and different industrial buildings closing down and so forth. Again, do I have a crystal ball? Do I know if this is going to happen? No. But again, why, uh, put, uh, our destiny in somebody else's hands when we can prevent that from happening? And so they basically come back and they said, we're going to, this, this total package is enough for us to continue to do business here in Livingston and, and look what happened. They, they turned around right away and decided to invest in a new laboratory, and so, uh, that's what's going on there. Lastly, uh, the, the, um, uh, in terms of, of, of moving forward, uh, from here, uh, I anticipate to continue to have a great working relationship with, uh, Foster Farms. Again, for the, for the prosperity and benefit of all of our residents and all of our other businesses because there's so many interconnections, uh, that, that exist. And so, uh, I suggest to the council, I recommend to the council that we, uh, approve this incentive package for Foster Farms and, and continue to, uh, move in the, in the positive, positive direction. Should you have any questions at this time, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Uh, this item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward and comment on this item? And, uh, remember your comments are limited to three minutes, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Um, Mr. Ramirez, that was a very nice recap of everything. I appreciate your, your, uh, input. If we had five hundred thousand dollars in the account right now, I would say slam dunk, do it, no problem. We're about two hundred thousand dollars short. Where, you didn't answer my question. Where's the other two hundred thousand coming from? And, um, second point is three years, doesn't sound like a lot. Is that the beginning? I mean, are you going to, are you working on something longer term or is three, are we three years and then all is fair again? Um, third point, um, I, I looked down the list and I, I'm sorry, I just came from the ball field, so I didn't have time to bring my list with me. The projects that, where the money is going to, that Foster Farms would have paid in, um, are those projects, would they be put on hold if we don't have the money to do it? Because they're, because they didn't pay their fair share? Or are those projects going through anyway? Those are all my questions. Thank you very much. Like I said, if we had five hundred thousand dollars in the bank, slam dunk, got to do it. We don't, so I'm, I'm concerned.
Mr. Ramirez, go ahead, please.
Mr. Blevins, thank you for your questions. They're excellent questions. So let me, uh, provide even further detail. So in essence here, you're looking at, all, all, all types of businesses out there are, create what are called, uh, development impact fees. So you have all these fees, okay? So in essence, we are not waiving the fees, but the fees, there's a fee schedule, okay? So we plan to make all of those, uh, categories whole. And so as, so as we replenish the economic development fund, okay? Right now, as you've mentioned, we have about two hundred and ninety thousand approximately, so we're about two hundred short. So this gives us a time and council is going to decide whether or not, uh, they want to address it in, in these next fiscal year and the following fiscal year, or if they want to extend it for a third or fourth fiscal year in smaller chunks, okay? As we replenish that, those funds. But what I can communicate to you is that we are making each one of those funds whole, okay? From the replenishment of the economic development fund, okay? So as far as Foster Farms, to answer your question, as far as Foster Farms leaving in three years, of course, anything can happen. However, the likelihood is very minimal because I just mentioned to you that they invested sixty-eight million dollars in a new facility, in a new line for a new, uh, product line with a new vendor, one. Two, they, in, in addition to that, they invested in a new laboratory that is, cost them about one point two million dollars. So again, the likelihood of them leaving, okay? And then, uh, I also heard, uh, uh, internal communication of the new CEO, okay? Who, uh, uh, squashed the rumors that were out there that they were going to be bought by, um, Tyson Foods, okay? And then there's one other point, very important point. Because Foster Farms is, uh, an essential partner of ours, as part of all these discussions and what we're doing here, I also brought up the, the, the issue about, uh, point of sale, that we should look at talking about the point of sale. Let me elaborate more on what the point of sale is. The point of sale has nothing to do with what I've been talking about right now, but it is important. Whenever you have, uh, a company who is negotiating, let's just say fuel as an example, because that's the most, uh, better example and people can understand. Right now, Foster Farms buys its fuel wholesale from a broker out of Stanislaus County. Wherever that contract was negotiated, it's that county who gets the, uh, the sales tax. Well, they were gracious enough to look into this, that we began discussions because what we want is we want that point of sale to be here in Livingston. Because if we get that point of sale here in Livingston, then we get that extra amount of money and we're open to entice them to do that, open to having a tax sharing agreement with them so that we both will benefit because that money will be reinvested. They're going to have to pay that money anyways. So why not invest it in the community that they're in, one? Two, uh, uh, the, the, what, there's a lot of things that need to get addressed around here and so they will be benefiting from it as well. So the last point, and I reiterate, is the point of sale. And the point of sale, I'm just looking at the fuel at this point because you can imagine how much fuel they use. But there's other areas that we're going to explore, and so the point of sale is also a very important piece. So thank you for your questions. You can ask all the questions you want.
Good. Specific though. You're hope, hopeful that your investments come through. We don't have the money. You're hopeful that your investments come through. If the stock market takes the dump, what do we do?
Yeah, valid, valid question that you're saying. Okay? So first of all, the, uh, the, we're going to continue to collect on property tax. We're going to continue to collect on sales tax. We're going to continue to explore on the point of sale. Okay? So the, 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 uh, the funding itself is internal, okay? Again, I'm using, I'm not, we're not, uh, waiving any fees. So what we're basically doing is internally, we're holding that money, okay? We didn't collect it, so we're holding it, and we're going to make each one of those funds whole. And so I mentioned to you that seventy-five thousand dollars conservatively is what we're going to give back every year. So technically to pay it off, it'll probably be about two and a half years, okay? And, and that's for, that's just on property tax and sales tax. No other funds, no other permits, no nothing. So do I feel confident that we'll be able to make the strokes? Yes. Do I think that Foster Farms is going to go anywhere? No. Do I think that Foster Farms is going to continue to invest in this community? Yes. Do we still need to be, uh, uh, partners? Because when they sneeze, we get a cold or vice versa. So...
I can't say I disagree with you. I'm just, you know...
Well, look at the, look at the...
Five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand in the bank, two hundred thousand is going to appear out of thin air. Where's it coming from?
Well, where do you...
You're hoping your investments come through. If their investments don't come through, we don't do those projects. Is that what it is?
Okay, let me talk about them.
I'm not trying to be a, a...
No, no, no. I appreciate what you're saying. So let me just say this. The city generates funds...
Mr. Blevins, three minutes.
The, the, the funds that are generated for municipalities come from property tax, from permits, from citations, from sales tax. So the city will continue to generate funds in all those areas, and so we prioritize, and so we have to pay for this. And one, one of the leverages that we have, Mr. Blevins, the leverages that we have is we can extend it from two years or we can extend it to four years. It just depends on what the council wants to do, but those funds will come.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Blevins. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Uh, anybody else from the audience wish to comment on this item? Uh, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
So when I was listening to you talk about...
Your name and address, please.
My name is Laura Gutierrez. Uh, what was the other question you had?
Address.
Oh. Do you need me to say it out loud?
No, you should say the city.
You can say the city.
Livingston.
Thank you.
Um, there was something you said about Foster Farms giving back to the community through like nonprofits and et cetera. Do you have to go to specific channels to go talk to them? Because I've gone forward and asked Foster Farms and they just straight up denied me. They didn't even, I was like, what, can I speak to somebody else? And they just straight up refused. So does this mean if I wanted to get, go through a nonprofit to even ask Foster Farms, I'd have to go through you guys? Because it doesn't sound like Foster Farms gives out donations to the city if you're not part, part of the council.
Yeah, just so you know, city does not, on behalf of anybody...
So how do...
Uh, what the city does is Foster Farms is, they will help the city or vice versa. Just to give some examples, the, the police station that we have over there, you've seen our police station?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was about eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. We were looking to build a, a police station. City didn't have the money. Foster Farm pretty much said, go ahead and build it and send us the invoice.
Mm-hmm.
So we built it, we sent them an invoice and they paid it. So, and then over the years, they have contributed to fireworks, they bought the fire department turnout, so they, they, they do things like that. Now, what your, what your project is, I don't know. I can't speak to it. But obviously, they have to make that determination. We can't make that determination for them.
Mm-hmm. So I was talking in reference to a softball team I was creating for girls because there's nothing here for girls in town. If you want to play travel, there's no such thing here. There's no investment in girls here. So I went to Foster Farms and I asked them, hey, do you guys mind donating here so that we can start up a team? You know, it's a very low-income community and I understand that. And it's very expensive to play... And it's very expensive to play travel, but, but if you're coming from Livingston, there's no way you're gonna be able to make a mu, a thousand dollars per girl. That's not gonna happen, not in Livingston. So I had asked Foster Farms, hey, do you guys, you know, can, do you guys do donations? Like, we're nonprofit, we have all our paperwork done, right? Like, where, can you help us out? And they were just, no. So if they're, they're in Livingston, I was, I'm kind of wondering, like, where is this nonprofit helping to back the community?
Yeah, well, thank you very much, especially because of your passion and what you do, and, and, and looking out for the young women in this community. Uh, I, I can tell you, and this is no excuse, but there has been a transition. Mrs. Farmer was the one who was in charge of, you know, uh, of solici, uh, that, any, anytime there was any solicitation of, of funding, donations, it went through her. Uh, there's a new person, I'll be more than happy to give you that. Uh, I, I can tell you, uh, you know, from personal experience, that, that they donate across the board. Of course, they get a lot of requests, I mean, I can't even tell you how many requests they get. However, I will certainly provide you with the contact, I'm sure they'll, they'll consider, you know, some type of donation for you. But they do help the community, and, um, and, and, and it's not just local. I mean, even, even outside of Livingston, they help.
Yeah, because that's what I was referring to, I was referring to Livingston, because they are in Livingston. So I was hoping, if you're asking for a softball team for girls here, because like I said, there's nothing here for them, I was hoping at least some type of, you know, yeah, let me get back to you, and then straight up, instead of a, no. No, don't even contact me again, like, we don't do stuff like that. Because that's what I got from them, I got, no, we don't donate to nonprofits.
I'll give you their, their, the contact name, and so I'll give you my card.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Last call, does anybody else wish to comment on this item, before I close to the public? This item is now closed to the public, council discussion?
Yeah, I got something. Uh, first of all, I just want to start by reading the statement on the staff report. Livingston's future and identity is intertwined, intertwined with that of Foster Farms, and their unique relationship makes us for a strong bond around community, family values, and economic vitality. Uh, I believe that statement is true, um, you know, it's, for me, I see it as a broad, I want to see it as an overarching subject, item, and how is it gonna impact our community and our families? Uh, I think Foster Farms, for a lot of our families, it's a livelihood, jobs. Uh, so it's important to work with them, and, um, you know, if there's something we could do, like, for example, this incentive packet, I think we should definitely support it. Um, like Jose mentioned, um, it's a, actually a, a several departments, several offices that put this incentive program together, um, like you mentioned, uh, the county, um, WorkNet, Merced County, uh, the county's Community and Economic Development, MID. Uh, so it's different departments that see how important Foster Farms is to the, not only Livingston, but to the region. The only, and, you know, of course, the jobs are important, they do contribute to the, uh, community, uh, as personal experience, you know, they have helped us out, uh, with the pancake breakfasts, for example, that's something that, you know, is coming up, and they helped us out with that. The only thing that I would have kind of some concern, like Mr. Blavens mentioned, was a three-year. And what he was referring to is that if Foster Farms were to cease substantially all of its operation in the city, within three years of the date, a certificate occupancy was first issued from the project, Foster Farms will be required to repay the fees to the city. Uh, minus 184, 185,000 for each full year that it continued operation after that date. That, that would be my only concern, the three years.
Yeah, would you consider changing it to five years?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
But that's all I have to say about that.
Huh?
That's, that was what I wanted to say.
Well, we can change that to five years, so that's not a problem, I don't think that's a problem. Yeah, well, I mean, we'll, we'll put that, we'll change that, and then we'll see how the vote goes. So, uh, council member Kane? Mayor, Mayor Protem? Yeah, I just want to echo in what, uh, council member Aguilar said is, Livingston, if something were to happen with Foster Farms, Livingston would be most impacted. But yet, we are contributing the least amount based on other entities, between the state, county, and others, for six and a half million dollars. So outside of Livingston, their six million dollar contribution, we're putting 500,000. But yet, if something were to happen, I'm sure everybody that owns a home, that works there, will be devastated. And, and we all know that we're all creatures of habit, that if you were to start that exit, as it were, say that you build something, Louisiana, where labor's cheaper, or whatever, then, once you do, the first one is always the hardest one, then second one's a little easier, and then next thing you know, that's, that's the trend now. So hopefully, this will, uh, help them to stay put, and I think they will. So, I think with that, I think we need to move forward. Go ahead, Mr. Aguilar.
I just have one more question for say, I know on the staff report says that, um, Foster Farms has considered relocating out to the city and state, so can you speak a little bit more about that, um, how, um, substantial, you know, that is?
Yeah, no, thank you, council member Aguilar. Yeah, so just to reiterate, um, you know, there, the, the, the fact that they were looking at other, other states, certainly, uh, you know, made us think even further, and I'm, again, this is not to, uh, deem them, you know, or, or say anything negative about them, because, you know, the business is business, and they have to look at all their options. And so, it was, it was us as a group that decided to come to the table to make their decision, either look at it this way, either that much harder, or that much easier, to stay here. And so, uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, they didn't start the beginning, like the mayor said, the beginning of, of, of this, you know, exiting slowly, let's just say. And so, um, it's, it was very real. I mean, the fact that you had, you know, the state involved in the governor's office, and that, uh, and if you look at their application, they list the 2,032 jobs in there, so it's very real.
Uh, thank you, uh, anything else, Mr. Aguilar? Okay, so, uh, just so, just to make sure that, uh, per council member Aguilar, on page two, under the term, item four, where it says third anniversary, we're changing that to the fifth anniversary, is that still correct? Okay, council, everybody understands this? Okay, then, based on that, go ahead, sir.
Mayor, if I may, one of the other changes then would also be potentially, uh, section number five, discussing the reimbursement per year, that number, the 184, is meant to divide-
By three, so we'll change to five, yes, yeah, of course. Okay? That helps out with lots of other concerns too, okay? All right, uh, if there is any further discussion, council? If not, uh, we'll entertain a motion at this time?
So forth move for the changes discussed.
Okay, as amended?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Aguilar, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second by councilmember, uh, Soto, I, uh, Baptista, I'm sorry, I'm, my apologies. Uh, councilwoman, I've been calling you that all night, haven't I? See what happens if I don't get snacks? I have a second by councilwoman, uh, Disoto, may I have, uh, Baptista? I will get this right sometime today. Yes, thank you. I have a second by councilwoman Baptista. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Okay, item number two, this is the changes to the special tax rates for community facility district number two seventeen, 2017 dash one, public services. And do we have any representative from, okay, uh, Mr. Ramirez? No, we need to, the motion first.
So, uh, just to provide a little bit of background on the community facilities district, the community facilities district is basically a special district that the city, uh, enlists, or has different businesses, when they move into town, they basically have to vote to be part of this district. And this district actually addresses, uh, it's a special tax to finance the impact of new development, like police, police protection, uh, fire suppression, paramedic services, uh, parks, landscaping. And so, they pay their own way. So, we've gone through the whole process, this is, uh, this is the, at the, at the end of the process. Uh, it was voted to, to institute, uh, this new community facility district. Does not impact the residents in any way. Again, this is for them to pay for those services that, uh, are, uh, directed to their specific, um, area of new district.
Uh, thank you, uh, this item is now open to the public, does anybody wish to comment on this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Since, uh, there is nobody coming forward, council, any discussion at this time? Okay, since we have now had the, uh, public hearing, uh, the, the, the city council living, uh, of city Livingston adopted a resolution of formation of the community facility district, 2017 dash one, public service, establishing the district and boundaries thereof pursuant to section 53325.1 of the California Department Government Code. The city council of city Livingston also adopted the resolution calling for a special election as submitting to the qualified electors of the community facility district number 2017 dash one, public service. A ballot measure regarding an annual levy of special tax within the community facility. The results of the election authoring the levy of special taxes within the boundaries of community facility district should not be declared. City clerk, do we have the election? Do we have the ballots?
One ballot with 13 votes was submitted in favor of the ballot measure. No ballots were submitted in opposition to the ballot measure.
Okay, uh, if my math is correct, then there is at least two-thirds majority in the favor of the ballot measure. The resolution declaring the election results and directing the recording of the notice of appeal section should be adopted. Uh, city council, uh, at this time, uh, we need to have a resolution?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Livingston declaring the results of a special election in the city of Livingston, community facilities district number 2017 dash one, public services, and directing the recording of the notice of special tax lien.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Aguilar, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Mayor Protem Garcia. All, uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved?
And there is a second part of the ordinance for this, so at this time, does anybody wish to make a motion for the ordinance?
I make a motion, order first reading of the ordinance of the city council of the city of Livingston, California, authorizing the levy of the special tax within the community facilities district number 2017 dash one, public services.
I have a motion by councilwoman Baptista, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll second by councilmember Kane, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Thank you, uh, moving on to citizens' comment. This section of the agenda allows a member of the public to address the city council, any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public who are unrecognized, the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes, in accordance with the state open meeting laws. No action be taken by the city council's living for items which are on the agenda this evening. Members of the public will be provided the opportunity to address the city council for each item brought for discussion. Citizens' comment, please?
Hi, uh, my name is Maria Gutierrez, and I'm here with my, uh, we're here from, we're from Livingston. I'm here with my daughter, Alondra Gutierrez, today. Uh, we're here in regards to Little Guys Field, and, um, there's a couple of things my daughter wants to address, so I'm going to let her, she's a little nervous, so give her a break. If you have any questions, I'll-
No problem, take your time, okay? You're amongst friends here, okay, so no worries.
Hi, my name is Alondra Gutierrez, and I'm 14 years old. I've been playing city softball since kindergarten and currently in eighth grade. I've lived in Livingston my whole life and played city sports. I'm here today to, to discuss girls playing at Little Guys and Gals Field. Take note that it also says gals. Last year, major girls played softball on Little Guys and Gals Field all season. This year, I have received my game scheduled and noticed that we will only be playing a few games there. As you can tell, I'm disappointed, because I believe all boys and girls should have equal playing games on this field. Then, I come to find that major and minor boys play all their games at this little, at Little Guys Field, and minor girls play absolutely no games there. Girls want to play at Little Guys Field because they too want to be the main focus during games. The field is much better than the sports complex. At the sports complex, people and dogs walking through your field during games. There's holes in the field, it's not chalked. The fields aren't as great as the Little Guys Field. Can someone explain to me how this is fair? Let me guess, I don't hit as hard as boys, or you're gonna say the mounts are gonna be, going to be a problem. A girl can do anything a boy can do, and the mounts have never been a problem. We've always put boys first, whether it's school, whether it's the community, or whether it's society. As you will know, girls have been trying to move forward instead of backwards. This issue about girls not playing at Little Guys Field has moved backwards for girls in our community. I'm here for, I'm, I'm here to ask for equality for all girls in our community, whether it, to, whether it be in sports or any activities where girls take part. You, as leaders of our community, need to focus on the future of our girls in the community, because it's time for change. Help us fight for a better tomorrow in a world ruled by men. As you can see, it's, it is not just about Little Guys Field. Thank you for your time, my name is Alondra Gutierrez.
Uh, thank you, you did great. So, uh, Mr. Ramirez, or?
Yes, uh, first of all, I applaud you and, and your mother and your family for coming. Uh, we, we certainly would like to see more civic participation, and this is certainly, uh, very rewarding. So we will look into the matter, uh, we do have a recreation commissioner here next to me. Uh, we will talk to the, um, uh, the persons who actually oversee that department, and, uh, we will get back to you.
Yeah, um, her concern is, I just want to address this a little bit myself, too. Her concern is last year, they played at Little Guys Field. I did bring this up to Jackie, and she did make changes to the schedule, but, um, it was after the fact. And I think that what's being missed here is that we shouldn't be going backwards. Last year, they played their games there, this year, they weren't allowed to play games there, for, you know, whatever reason it was. But I shouldn't have to bring it, bring it up. It should have been like a, a go. Um, my daughter, when, of course, when they seen their schedules that they got, they were upset, the team was upset. You know, we need to focus on our girls here in Livingston. Why minor boys are playing at that field and not the, um, major girls? That's a problem, and it needs to be addressed. And, um, if someone could address that to her, um, I too was part of the commissioners a year ago, and we had made this change, this was a change, and then I don't know what happened this year.
So, just lastly, I'd just say, um, of course, um, you're always welcome, I have an open door policy. If there's anything that comes up, you know, these kind of things, I mean, you're more than welcome to come here and, and use this venue, but, uh, I will also extend an invitation to you, that if you ever want to talk about anything associated with recreation or anything else with the city, my, my office is always open to you, so, thank you.
Well, that's nice to know, we didn't know, we weren't aware of that.
Uh, I think councilman Aguilar, you wish to make a comment?
Um, just, you know, it's a beautiful letter, you have, you're a strong writer, so good job, you did a good job. Um, I know that, uh, Jackie had worked on the schedules, I don't think her intention was to, you know, purposely, uh, leave the girls out of the Little Guys and Gals, uh, field. Um, I think it just, uh, points out a, a bigger issue, that we're limited in baseball fields in the city. And that's something that I've been advocating to, to definitely have more in town. Um, so, but we'll definitely talk to her and figure out what's going on. Um, I know that we're, um, using the, the high school softball fields, I think. Where are your, the rest of the games, where are they, besides?
Sports complex.
Oh, really? Okay, so they're, they're not using the high school fields?
So, if we, let's get this clear, so minor boys and major boys play all of their games at Little Guys- at Little Guys Field. Major, minor girls play no games at Little Guys Field. Major girls play some of their games at major, at Little Guys Field. How is that okay? That's, that's her concern. Me, as a parent, having to explain that to my daughter?
Yep.
How is that okay? If you have little girls, you should be upset. If you have girls yourself, you should be upset. So, here I am, trying to explain this to my daughter. And as a parent, you know, what do you say? So, I'm, you know, when she said she wanted to come speak, you know, I, I did give her options. I go, you can go to the City of Livingston, speak to them, go to the commissioners. You know, if you feel this strongly about it, do something about it. And that's why we're here today. And she just wanted to address this. She, you know, this is something that bothered her, not just her, it was other teammates. She was actually at practice when she came, before she came out here, because she thought it was that important. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can be very proud of yourself. Just so, we didn't want to tell you earlier, but you were on TV. And you can tell all your teammates, show them on YouTube the video of you speaking, sticking up for them. And just so you know, I have two daughters. They're stronger than my son, so don't think the girls are weak. They're not. They're just as strong, okay? So, I'm very proud of you. I think we're all proud of you, what you came to accomplish, okay? Anybody else for citizen comment?
Good afternoon. My name is John Rubio. I am, I live here in Livingston. I am a student at Livingston High School. I am here on behalf of my AP Spanish class. This year, we are in charge of organizing the annual event known as Cinco de Mayo. For the past month, we have split ourselves into different committees, and we are becoming aware of how hard it is to create an event. We are learning important life skills such as communication, since we have to work with our classmates to ensure that everything turns out all right for our event. A lot of my classmates have been frustrated over the course of this month because it has been very stressful. Many of us have been able to do things, have to do things that we have never done. For example, I'm here right now, and so I'm learning to get out of my comfort zone. I am here with you today to try to connect my community with my school. My class would really appreciate it if you guys were able to come to our event and see the final project, product of our project. Also, I think this is a good opportunity for you guys to see how students are creating an event from scratch. Because I think that you guys will be surprised at the amount of effort we have been putting into this event. The Cinco de Mayo event will be held at the old gym in Livingston High School on Friday, May third. It will be from five to eight thirty PM. There will be a lot of student dances during this event, as well as the quinceañera expo. Also, there will be tacos on sale, but the entrance is free. We hope to see you there, and we would appreciate it if you would spread the word, since everyone is welcome. And if I can, I'm just gonna pass these flyers out really quick with all the information I just presented, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. While he's passing, does anybody else wish to comment on citizen comment?
David Blevins, P.O. Box seventy-six. First of all, I came up to thank the recreation department. We had opening ceremonies for baseball. Baseball is underway. It's going well. But I'm under, I am concerned. There, I would like to see more facilities. I know that's not easy to find, but if you can address this young lady's issues, that would be great. We need more, we need more baseball-only facilities with lights. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizen comment? If not, then the citizen comment portion is not closed. Moving on to consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial. Will be enacted one vote unless separation is requested by a city manager or a council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city manager requests a specific item be removed. We have one item, item three, this is the approval of the warrant registered dated April ten, twenty nineteen. Council, any discussion, or I'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Second by Councilmember Aguilar. Do I, may I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to discussion of potential action items. The item number four, this is the resolution adopting policies for administration and procurement of architectural engineering, A&E, services for state and federal-funded transportation projects. And Mr. Ramirez?
Yes. So, what we have before you, this is pretty standard, uh, resolution adopting policies for administration, procurement of architectural services, for state and federal transportation projects.
I don't have any, but this item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to comment? Seeing nobody moving forward, this item is now closed to the public. Council, any discussion?
Just real quick, Jose, so this is just adopting the guidelines for awarding and managing the contracts, right?
Yeah, they're, they're basically-
These guidelines.
Transportation, uh, construction.
Okay, council, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting policies for the administration and procurement of architecture and engineering services for state and federal-funded transportation projects.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Baptista. See, I'm getting it right now. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to a resolution approving the City of Livingston fiscal year nineteen twenty list of eligible projects for funding and road maintenance and rehab account created by Senate Bill SB one, Road Repair Accountability Act of twenty seventeen, authorizing the city manager to file with the State, California State Transportation Commission, the project list and the annual expenditure report fiscal year nineteen twenty, RMR a funding. And, go ahead, okay, I see Noi come up there. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and as the council members, Noe Martinez from the Office of the City Engineer. And just to speak briefly on this item, it is a routine item that we do every year and where the City of Livingston is required to submit a list of eligible projects to the California Transportation Commission in order for the city to receive its annual allocation of SB one funding. And the allocation would be for the next fiscal year, nineteen twenty. The projects that we have identified for this year are the Wynton Parkway rehabilitation from Joseph Gallo Drive to Highway ninety-nine, the Hammond Avenue rehabilitation from Campbell to Highway ninety-nine, and Stephanie Avenue rehabilitation from Davis to Campbell Boulevard. Now, the amount that it's going to be, that is anticipated to be allocated to the city for this upcoming fiscal year is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand and a hundred and fifty-two dollars. With that said, I will address any questions, then maybe?
Thank you. This item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to discuss this item? Please come forward. Seeing nobody coming forward, this item is now closed. Council, discussion? I don't see any discussion. Mr. Sanchez, do we need to make two separate resolutions, or can it be all done at one time?
The resolutions... Mayor, the resolution itself actually contains the authorization as well.
Okay.
So, the resolution covers it as long as it's read completely.
Okay, so whoever makes it understands it has to be read completely. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make motion. I'm here to adopt the resolution approving the City of Livingston fiscal year nineteen twenty list of eligible projects for funding and road maintenance and road maintenance account created by Senate Bill one, Road Repair Accountability Act of twenty seventeen, and authorizing the city manager to file with the California Transportation Commission the project list and annual expenditure for fiscal year nineteen twenty, RMR a funding.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Baptista. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mayor Protem. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, item number six, this is the city council to provide staff direction for appointment of the second alternate to the planning commission. I don't see Mr. Hyde, so Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor and council, again, this is, you know, we, we're, staff is asking for direction as it relates to identifying an alternate for the planning commission. You might recall from the last go-around that you had at least five individuals who submitted applications and that were not appointed, that you might be interested in appointing as an alternate. You had Brandon Espinoza, Mr. David Blevins, you have Jose Moran, Wapender King, and Renee Wade. And, or you can direct staff to re-advertise for an alternate position. It's your discretion.
Thank you. This item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward?
David Blevins, P.O. Box seventy-six, have a question for you about this. This is a done deal. You guys are gonna appoint a second commissioner already, or are you discussing whether to do it or not?
It's an alternate.
I'm asking if you're, if you're, if you're going to do it, or if you're taking discussion on whether you should do it or not, is my question. Whether to do it or not? To go ahead and appoint?
It is-
You're gonna do, you're gonna get a second commissioner?
It is, at this time, a discussion. We do have to bring it back.
To clarify. You have one alternate right now, okay?
Right.
You're gonna name a second alternate, for sure? It's already done.
The ordinance-
You've already made that decision.
Ordinance allows for us to appoint another alternate. The discussion's gonna be-
Whether, not whether to do it or not, how you're gonna do it is what-
That is correct.
Okay, all right, then I have a question.
Okay, this item is still open to the public.
Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, P.O. Box one sixty-three, Livingston. Whatever you guys are going to do, I hope you will get in gear and do it as absolutely quickly as possible. I think it's a really good idea to get a second alternate as soon as possible, so that when our planning commi, when, when the planning commission is in, is in session, we have at least a complement of five. I was here for Tuesday's commission meeting, and up until the lax, up until almost the last second, we didn't even know whether or not we were going to have enough for a quorum. Now, I've seen it happen before, where there wasn't enough even bodies in the room for a quorum, and the applicant was not happy about it. At Tuesday's planning commission meeting, due to the nature of the project, at first it felt like we were going to have a two-two split. We're going to have a lot of things coming down the pike in the future. And I think we need to get the planning commission in the condition so that we don't have to worry about a quorum, we don't have to worry about enough bodies in the room to have a meeting, and we don't have to worry about two-two splits. So, whatever you do, do it quickly.
Please, thank you. Anybody else? If not, item is now closed to the public. Council, discussion? Uh, for me, this doesn't, uh, ordinance doesn't take effect until the nineteenth, so we do have to bring it back anyway. My suggestion is that we appoint somebody as a second alternate at the next council meeting, so that'll be maybe two weeks, three weeks. But also, folks that never thought about it, maybe make a pro, kind of a short-term thing for people to apply if they wish to consider until the next council meeting, so we can maybe open it up, so if anybody wants to add their name to the list, we can consider. But, but rest is up to the council, so that's what I would say, but I'd like to hear from the rest of them.
I like that idea. I think we should open it up, even if it's a short period of time, and then also contact the previous applicants and see if they're still interested, and who's interested, and then go from there.
Yeah, short term's probably best, 'cause-
Yeah, so we could get somebody in there as soon as, soon as possible.
So, council, any further discussion? I don't think, this is the direction, so do we all agree on a short-term recruitment to the next council meeting, then bring it up for discussion and appointment? And contact all current waiting members or applicants? Okay, we don't need a motion, we just, do we need to?
Directions?
Consensus, so, okay. All right. Okay, council, any further business? I'm sorry? Okay, and then we are in German. Thank you.